Okay, our 1030 item, 6.6, consideration of LG Sonic proposal. And we have Supervisors Crandall and Sabatier.
So we're gonna get a presentation up. So as it states on the memo, we've talked about this back in June. We were given some, some direction, I guess, from the board on how to move forward and come back. And so just wanted to come back and express kind of the importance of this project, its meaning to the county, and then talking about costs and funding. And I don't know that that's what my slideshow looks like. I hope I did better than that. So I'm gonna show you things and read you things that we may not like, but I just kind of want to frame it in a different perspective. So the picture on the left is Clear Lake Oaks. This is what it looked like in 2019. Not a pretty environment, not suitable for property values, not suitable for health, not suitable for any type of recreation at this point in time, and a deterrence for people from enjoying where they live and for people to come out and play and recreate. The middle picture is the Red Bud Park with Thompson Harbor. And you can see the algae extending much further out and all around, mainly around the shore, which is typically where we'll see the big blooms. And the picture on the right is my predecessor, Jeff Smith. To be honest, I'm not quite sure what he's attempting to do, but obviously, he's trying to see what the problem is, and he is trying to do something about it and learn. But the picture obviously exhibits and portrays the unfortunate scene that the algae blooms creates. And I believe that this picture is Maniki Beach, right near City Hall. As we know, the algae forms mostly, not forms, but is seen mostly in the Clear Lake Oaks arm and the Clear Lake arm because of the current with all the water from the lake eventually going through Cache Creek and out toward Yolo County, and with also the prevailing winds pushing the water east. And so if we can go to the next slide. So I decided to start pulling items of how are we seen from the outside? And so I have some quotes from, this is 2022, August 3rd, San Francisco Chronicle. The headline is Toxic Algae in This Northern California Lake Is Corrupting Drinking Water and Causing Horrendous Smells. Here are some quotes. This is from one of our residents. The stench alone from the blue-green algae blooms has been enough to discourage residents from using the lake recreationally or even getting close. The article continues to say these blooms can produce toxic chemicals that upon exposure can cause varying levels of sickness and severe health effects in people, livestock, and animals. Symptoms can include rashes, hives, diarrhea, vomiting, coughing, and wheezing, among other symptoms. This is another quote. This is actually a staff member in our county. It's a horrible problem, and the smell is horrendous. Honestly, it's like a dying buffalo. Not sure what exactly that meant, but it was a bad quote that I just wanted to highlight that this is what's being advertised outside of Lake County. This is the story, not just that people are telling about us. This is the same story that we're telling about ourselves, because these are residents that are being quoted. And then the newspaper article continues to say in 2009, so it's not just 2022, a buildup of algae blooms canceled fishing tournaments, and I can't see what's behind there, but had negative impacts on nearby businesses, officials said. If we can go to the next one. 2022, on August 2nd, from the Press Democrat, title is Clear Lake Residents Near Massive Blue-Green Algae Blooms Offered Access to Treated Drinking Water. As you can remember, we had a state of emergency due to the drought, and those that have private water systems were not capable to treat the water enough to make it potable, so we had to set up drinking stations around two areas. I believe one was on Point Lake View, near the Lower Lake area, and one was towards Windflower Point. And here's a quote from that article. Expansive blue-green algae blooms around the lower portions of the lake this year have raised toxin concentrations to some of the highest levels ever seen this early in the season. 2021, September 23rd, Press Democrat again, the title, Visitors Warn Not to Swim in Clear Lake, Avoid Boating in Eastern Arms Due to Blue-Green Algae. State water regulators have issued a new round of warnings about recreating in Clear Lake because of concerns and potentially dangerous blue-green algae blooms that could sicken people or pets, and they are advising boaters to steer clear of the eastern part of the lake. And again, we are talking about the Clear Lake Oaks arm and the Clear Lake arm. Next, 2019, July 30th, Press Democrat, Swimmers/Boaters Urged to Stay Out of Certain Clear Lake Areas Because of Blue-Green Algae. Quote from the article, four areas are of particular concern, including the water around Austin Park Beach and Red Bud Park, both in Clear Lake. Both locations also had high microcystin levels last August, according to state records. Going back to 2009, August 9th, Press Democrat, Stinky Mess Along Clear Lake South Shore, and I just will, I'll stop reading. These are not our local newspapers. This is how our lake is being advertised outside of this area. To speak about the impact to, directly to Clear Lake Oaks and Clear Lake, I think is obvious through the pictures and through the living experiences of those that reside there, but to speak of the economic impact, not just to Clear Lake Oaks, and not just to Clear Lake, but to the entire county as a whole, when the lake is one of our biggest draw of tourism, and tourism provides one of the greatest revenue streams for our economy. This is the story that is being told by both outside of the area and by our constituents to these media outlets. We need to change that. And so let's go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So here are some of the benefits from having the MPC buoys. We want to reduce the algae. This will help with health, reduction in health hazards to humans and pets. The CDC states that irritations go from, that it goes, the blue-green algae goes from irritations all the way to neurologic symptoms, and liver damage can occur. We know, we just spoke about it earlier, our health metrics in the county are not good. We want to keep moving forward. This is not helping us whatsoever, especially when this is a lake that a lot of people would like to and do recreate in. We want to make sure that they recreate in there safely. I know that some, and my predecessor, have experienced symptoms after using airboats to try and break down. There are comments by the EPA that talks about air droplets coming from the blue-green algae that can produce these types of symptoms as well. So it's not just in the water, it's also in the air. So if you're smelling it, that means there's probably particulate that could potentially impact you. Let's take care of that. Ecological. Cleaner environment for our wildlife to flourish. This is a quote from the EPA on the effects of dead zones and harmful algal blooms. The overgrowth of algae consumes oxygen and blocks sunlight from underwater plants. When the algae eventually dies, the oxygen in the water is consumed. The lack of oxygen makes it impossible for aquatic life to survive. We have seen a lot of fish kills in the past decades, and some of that is due to lack of oxygen. And typically, we'll see carp and catfish amongst other fish that will be harmed by that. If we get, if we reduce the amount of algae, it would increase the amount of oxygen, which would help the fish life in our lake. And we also know from the studies done, I think it was USGS or Fish and Wildlife, that they are seeing a reduction in all fish in our lake at this moment. Fish and Wildlife? Thank you. Economical. Obviously, these articles are not giving our lake and our county a good reputation. We can change that around. And with a better reputation and a better draw to our lake, increased in business and increase in tourism, and that impacts everybody around the lake, not just the area where we see the most amount of algae. I have a quote from one of the Sunset Resort owners. I think this was in the 2009 article. I just lost a whole season. It might close me down. And in fact, they are now a full-time residence, not a resort at this point. And our water districts. Increased cost in treatment due to the amount of algae. We have new state regulations specific to Clear Lake that now tests for, I might say it incorrect, so I'm not sure if it's cyanobacteria or microcystin, but they are testing for, for both. But they are doing special tests specific to the lake due to the fact that it has such a high level of cyanobacteria and microcystin. And so our water districts would benefit from this as well. If we can go to the next slide, please. So here is the MPC buoy. At the bottom, you can see that is where the sonar comes from. The top are the solar panels. They are chain-linked to the bed of the lake. They're 441 pounds. I put it in inch and feet, just to simplify everything, about seven by eight feet wide, three feet deep. They use ultrasonic algae control, where you can actually change the type of algae control it is based on the type of algae that you're experiencing. This is one of the unique features of the MPC buoy. While others are preset for attacking only certain types of algae, this, you can actually change the regulation. It says minimal maintenance. What I read is it's once every six months. They do have different warranty, year warranty on different parts of the system. And we'd have to find more information on the actual maintenance itself and the cost. I do not have that for you. It is remotely operated, so you do not have to approach the buoy in order to make any of the changes. And one of the great features that I know I've heard the sharing of excitement from Water Resources is the quality, is the data, the water data that we would be receiving. It's every five minutes that you receive. Right now, I'm not gonna say if we're lucky. We're thankful that we have Big Valley and others that are working, I believe it's Elam, that are working to get us some of that water data. But this would give us a whole lot more to better understand as weather comes in, as activities are happening, what is happening to our water data, rather than once every two weeks or once every three weeks, and trying to better understand how it is that things were impacted by that. If we can move forward, please. Here are the two project areas, 14 buoys each. Typically, they do a certain amount of buoys depending on the acres. This is the largest lake that they would have, that they will ever touch. They have never done a lake of this size before. And doing one or two and trying to make it so that the cost seems more palatable would only lead to potential failure, since the rest of the lake, even in the north part, it creates algae all around. It's just that the algae is being pushed towards this area for the most part. And so having the treatment here so that we can reduce the amount of algae that pops up to the top. Basically, what the sonar does is it breaks down the algae as it floats to the top so that it can go back down to the bottom. And next page. So the cost. Overall, it's 1.5 million, a little bit more. They have approved for separating it into three separate years. You would get 28 MPC buoys. Year one would be $750,000, 14 in the Clear Lake arm, 14 in the Clear Lake Oaks arm. Eight out of those 28 would be buoy pros, where they are doing the data collection. The rest are just doing the water treatment. So funding sources. We do have Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, which I think is appropriate for this. That funding is given to us for the amount of federal land that we have in Lake County. We know that a lot of our nutrient load comes through the Middle Creek area, which comes from the national forest, hence federal land, and it has a great impact. Now, we have been doing a lot of work to reduce the amount of nutrients going into the lake and continuing to do that work. Obviously, we're doing work on Middle Creek, but I will suggest that 10 years from now, I hope that we can say it's done, but I would say it would be longer than 10 years before Middle Creek is ever done. What are we going to do to make sure that we can improve the economic drive and the reputation of our lake to draw in more visitors? There are $3.1 million available in that reserve, and it has not been allocated for anything. In the cannabis tax, we have a salary stabilization fund, which was set up in 2020, I believe, which was just in case with the salary increases that we needed to cover those things. We've been able to cover it. We can prove we can cover it. So the salary stabilization fund, I believe, will come back to us in mid-year potentially to see if we want to take it out of being stuck in salary stabilization. But it is not being used and is not planned on being used. We do have budget stabilization. We do have 15 million in reserves. We do have, what's the other one? That's 3.5 million, just-in-case fund. I don't have the right term for it, but there's other reserves that are supposed to do what the salary stabilization fund was meant to do, especially now that we know that we are affording the salary changes that we have made in the past. My preference is for us to move forward and to be able to activate this and get it done next year. If the board is uncomfortable with spending the dollars, and again, I'll just be blunt and honest, just like I was in the memo, we're not 100% sure that the mitigation that we hope to see is the mitigation we're going to see. I still think it's a worthy cause and a worthy effort, because doing nothing is continuing what we've already experienced and have been experiencing for the last 20, 30 years. There is grant funding. For example, there's a 2018 CBPG mitigation resilient infrastructure program funding available. There's $2.3 million. Granted, this project is not going to be the only project that's requesting to be on the list of projects. However, I don't think that anyone can make a request that goes above 2.3. I think this fund needs to pay for the project entirely. I did have a conversation with Mr. Carter, who did say that it was a possibility, I'll put a little question mark next to that, of reimbursement through that fund if we do move forward and start this project and then get it reimbursed. Again, possibility, I think we need to get that approved rather than saying 100% now. I was provided through one of our state representatives that there is Clean Water State Revolving Fund. However, that seems more aimed towards sewer and water public utilities. So not sure that that could be useful, but still something to look into. And then the cleanup and abatement account, which does suggest that algae abatement is a part of what grant funding could pay for. And I think that's all, no, I have more. So this project was approved by the Blue Ribbon Committee, but with the state deficit and with LAO stating we're gonna see a state budget deficit for the next three years, most likely not available to be funded. Again, I would rather move and solve the problem that we know continuously exists and kick the can down the road. Obviously, preferred option is just that. Alternative option, I'd love to at least walk away today to continue to direct staff to seek out grant funding, rather than saying that we're not going to do this. I think, I would like to believe that from this board, it's an issue of how we fund this project, not whether or not we want this project. Because again, it's already gone through the Blue Ribbon Committee. This is something that's been vetted. This is something that I happened to do my own research and ended up at the same place of the Blue Ribbon Committee. Obviously, I can't have a conversation with my colleague, Supervisor Crandall, about the Blue Ribbon Committee and the going-ons, since Supervisor Green is on that same committee. But him supporting to move this forward tells me that the Blue Ribbon Committee is not prepared to move this forward on their own. And I will let Supervisor Crandall speak, and then we'll go ahead and share a video real quick.
Do you want to share the video?
I need to bring it up.
So while you're doing that, I'll just go ahead and add that I've been talking with the Clear Lake Oaks Water, Clear Lake Oaks County Water District about being a partner. So they have this information before them as well, so they can bring more people to the table. Also reached out to Nies Water, Cow Water, but that's, you know, of course, not when it comes to this area, but just so they can have the insight as well, considering that, you know, 60% of the, you know, the water is used to buy these companies or, you know, sold by these companies. One of the other things to consider is that we have many projects in the hopper, EPA Super Fund site, Middle Creek Restoration. You know, there's, while these are working through, we need to do something in the meantime. It's kind of like the same conversation we're having with the whole Pillsbury situation. While all of this is taking place, what's gonna happen in the meantime? And so using this, using this attribute to potentially, you know, control a problem while we go through the other project, you know, enhancements, you know, this could potentially be something that's cheaper than the oxygenation program that Blue Ribbon Committee passed, which, you know, Lake County mostly opposed, if you really look at it. And that's also the struggle we have in the Blue Ribbon Committee is you have three or four different competing interests looking for funding and projects and that in any aspect. And so it gets really difficult to push things through at some times. And so like, something like this can also give us favor in that committee as well. A lot of times, those are the statements that are made to the county in those meetings is, well, Lake County can use their own funding and do something. Something like this moves forward, we have that. And say, we do. We take, we take steps. Now we want to take more steps. And I keep reminding them of the bylaws and charter that were put in place for that bill that Cecilia Aguilar-Curry put forward for us. And that's due to the, not only the cultural resources for the tribes, but also the economic development strategy. This is one of the biggest drivers, you know, when people go through all around the lake, regardless if they are coming to fish, if they're coming to just visit in general, they drive through the, especially the Highway 20, you see the lake, you smell the lake, and that's, it's discouraging. So if this, if this moves forward, we can control our own destiny at a cheaper, you know, cost as opposed to some of the other projects. I did look into another oxygenation program. They were called Ever Blue Lakes, which was way more expensive, and it wasn't even close to, it was more like the, you know, oxygen type of deal. And it wasn't like the actually hypolimnetic oxygenation program or a potential pilot program that is being done by UC Davis, which with that, it's one year, maybe two, and we're left with the spoils or, I don't even know if it's a benefit or not, you know. So I'd like to see if we can move forward with this. And if we have to get funding from another source, I'm fine with that, too. But I just, I think this is a good attempt and a good direction to do something about this situation.
So I'm gonna join this panelist here and then just share a two-minute video, and then we'll go ahead and be done and pass it back to you, Chair. It's in the way. There you go. Oh, how about I put some sound? Is that not working?
Right there.
Yeah, but then that plays my...
... municipality in...
I need it to work on there. No, that'll just make some big echo. I'm gonna pause, apologize for not having that work out. This is basically the city of Ukiah. Granted, this is nothing close to the size of our lake. They are using an LG Sonic. They are using this for sewer treatment to decrease the water, to increase the water quality, and then passing that on to irrigation purposes for agriculture. They have both city officials as well as agriculturists that are saying how it's really helped to clean and get rid of the algae and the muck that they used to experience all the time. And that's a brief summary, and I would say, please look at it. I apologize that I can't get it to work. And that's it.
Any questions or comments? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Just some general questions in no particular order. The memo says no change in scope. I think I'm counting more buoys than what Blue Ribbon Committee signed off on. I may be mistaken on that. So I just want to make sure this proposed configuration is the one that was vetted by BRC. Of course, sustainability is always a question. We can fire this up, and we can probably find initial funding, but if we find some traction with it, how do we keep it going? And, you know, what grants or match funds or assessments may be needed to get that doing? We are coming up on an inflection point with Water Resources, so staffing, you know, who's there to accept the data, what type of data sharing will be done with partner agencies and tribes? Is there any state permitting, any SecuNEPA stuff that needs to happen with that? You know, what level of state involvement is in there? And as we kick the funding question around quite a bit, you know, rather than adopt a whole Blue Ribbon project, maybe a offer of a, you know, share of cost or a match may induce some level of state action in the next funding round, just like we saw. We saw the prior year's projects not get funded. They finally got some funding this year, so that we have a good chunk of projects that were approved this year. It sounds like there's gonna be a pause in taking on new projects next year, and then we'll start addressing the backlog. So is a total self-help approach appropriate here, or is there some opportunity to do a share of cost and kind of at least move this to the front of the line of unfunded BRC projects from this year? So just bouncing that around, I'm generally supportive of this, but there were, of course, close to a dozen Blue Ribbon projects that also were approved that you're not bringing that forward. So that's it, just some generalized concerns.
I can answer when it comes to LG Sonic and the Blue Ribbon Committee. In those meetings, there's competing interests on many occasions. And so a lot of times, our projects don't even really get pushed forward. Some of the others, yes. But the only thing similar to this, this and the Blue Ribbon Committee, is just LG Sonic itself. And so now that the Blue Ribbon Committee has implemented basically a prioritization or, not only that, but it's not even done by consensus anymore. It's done by, well, do you vote yes or no? Now you have two or three other parties voting no against anything that they, you know, if they have a project, they're gonna want to push it forward. And if they, if we have a project, a lot of times, it's always said the county can do their own thing. So it's frustrating. So doing something like this not only gives us an argument, but also, you know, solves a problem rather than going through that headache, if that makes sense.
I have a question. So who are the other parties that would vote against this?
So we have, we have UC Davis.
Okay.
And then there's tribes, a couple of tribes.
And the tribes are not in favor of this?
Uh, there's one in particular that commonly isn't, and they get a lot of projects as well.
They're not in favor of this because they're prioritizing their...
Well, I don't know about this one. I just know that any project that's brought forward by Lake County, it's usually discouraged, if that makes sense.
Is that, is that maybe a conversation to have with our Assembly member, or have you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just as another response, I know that I worked with LG Sonic and Water Resources to get this scope. It was never a carbon copy, but the idea of the LG Sonic buoys and the ability to help clean the lake, absolutely the same thought process, but not a carbon copy.
It's not necessarily all the tribes. It's mainly one that has a very influential voice when it comes to the cyanobacteria, microcystin, and all that stuff.
Yeah, I guess my question is, you know, is it, is it something, do they have a problem with this particular project? It's their priority?
County projects. County has cannabis funds. The county has money. They should be doing these things on their own. Those comments are always thrown out. UC Davis commonly chimes in or just ignores it and, you know, kind of beats it down with anything that has to sound scientific or whatever the case. They have a, basically a doctor that is biologist or something like that from the school that is in on that committee, so.
Okay. Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah. Obviously, I know the last time we talked about this, we looked at grant funding. My one question in looking if we're gonna support this from the county is, in which we do support the overall concept, the hard thing around it is, don't know if it's gonna work. It says it right here in the memo. That's the real challenge. And I know when that first came on... I know when it first came on, as a board supervisor, when we took tours around and looked at the sewer system, I think our sewer system somewhat, I don't know if it was LG, but there was a thing, they called it the frog.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was a sewer thing that was out there, supposed to, you know, help with all the muck and everything that builds up in the sewer ponds. But are we still using those?
I think those are oxygenators, or they...
But I mean, the same con, same...
Basic concept.
Basic concept. I'll build some, but, you know, they're supposed to save a bunch of money and other stuff like that. And I don't know, I guess I'll reach back out to Scott. We had a, you know, and ask that question. I think he's on vacation right now. You know, that obviously relates back. You know, want to be able to support it, but I do have one question. Talked about CDBG, the possibility of reimbursement. I think that's really important conversation. I know it was probably preliminary, but...
Stephen Carter, Assistant County Administrative Officer. And this is a grant that Terry is applying for. Very unlikely that anything before the letter of approval would be reimbursed. But with the three-year plan that I saw, the second, third year could be put in there. The grant is due in March. It's through the state, so it's a little faster than normal. Probably around July 1, we know, and possibly have funding available.
What's the match? No match?
None.
Okay.
And this is not the only project wanting to go in there, so it's not a bad thing that it would be basically half and half.
Right.
And as a response, and again, just being, I could tell you what LG Sonic tells me, which is, it's going to work. And I'm not gonna put that on the memo, because I'm not here to sell their stuff. So I'm gonna be blunt, that I don't know until I see it. I don't think any of us will know until we see it. And I see it as a risk reduction for the issue that has been occurring. And maybe it's a bad analogy, and I don't mean to poke in areas I shouldn't be poking, but we are dealing with tree mortality. Even if we get rid of all the trees, which we should, doesn't mean we stop forest fires from happening. It stops them from being exacerbated a little bit, but that still doesn't stop the possibility of wildfires. And that doesn't mean we stop doing the work that we're doing to try to clean it up and make it right. So I think that this has similar potential in the way that it will reduce to a certain point. I sure hope it's to the point that I've been told by LG Sonic. But if we don't do anything, we're definitely not taking care of the problem that continues to be there.
So since you brought up tree mortality, we've been working for two years to find grant funding, and to limit the cost from us, from the county. I know we're gonna have to contribute something, but we could have started the work a long time ago, if we just wanted to start throwing money at it. And that is my problem with this. I am supportive of a project, and I don't know if it's this technology, because you both have mentioned that there's other things out there. And yes, it's been vetted by the Blue Ribbon Committee, but that's just, I think we need to do more for our policy on procurement. And I think we take opportunities to look for those grants. And if we have to offset or use the LATIC fund for matching, we have a limited amount of money. There's about $3 million there. And I think we need to leverage that, so we have more projects, and we can contribute smaller amounts towards matches, if we want to do a one-to-one. I would be okay with looking at that. But you mentioned our reserves, and we've never had reserves like we do now. And it's really critical that we keep them, because we're looking at both state and federal deficits now. And now is not the time to be looking at our reserves. So, you know, I appreciate that this presentation was dramatic, and we've had these conversations before. And it's, it is something that I agree we do need to pursue, but this is not our budgeting conversation. This is not mid-year. This isn't June. I can't even really wrap my head around putting a $1.5 million project out right now, when we're not looking at the context of our budget. So this is something that I can't support funding today, but I would be okay with looking at a project and grants. I do agree with Supervisor Green that we need to look more at the program. And how does this impact recreation and navigation? And there's a lot of buoys out there. That's a lot of buoys, and we have a lot of people on our lakes. So what does that look like? What does traffic look like? What does vandalism look like? What are, you know, what's gonna be the toll on our department, staffing and maintenance? All those things, I would like to have a better idea, to understand the overall impact. And then, this isn't just the county. This is the cities. This is tribes. This is water purveyors. What kind of coalition can we build to kind of come at this collaboratively, where we're cost-sharing, or we're sharing with the maintenance, so that we all have buy-in? Because this affects all of us. Vice Chair Simon?
I see Stephen came back. I don't know...
Oh, yeah. Stephen?
Well, I just wanted to say that if, if, from the position I'm hearing from the Chair, we can try to go for the entire thing in the CDBG grant, and then if awarded, theoretically, it can be implemented, unfortunately, in the end of 2024. So it's a little later than Supervisor Patsy wants, but that's one thing that could occur.
And it sounds like there's a couple projects.
There's at least four projects.
Four projects for that funding source. And so could some of them be partial funding, and then we match, or, you know, get matches from other organizations?
For the specific LG Sonic?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to explore that. Vice Chair Simon?
I think looking at the, you know, the grant opportunities is real important. If there's an opportunity to do the whole grant, and look, see if we get that. I understand you say there's four grants, potentially for that. I don't know what those are. I am in support...
Four projects for that same grant.
Or four projects for that same grant. My other departments have already asked for those to be put through.
So is that gonna be a conversation at mid-year? Okay.
And ju, oh, sorry.
Yeah. Looking at the, you know, the overall, you know, the reality of it is, the longer I've learned, it's out here on this board, you know, and the conversation happening, it's the oldest natural lake in North America. It is, it's gonna come with it. We're never gonna have, you know, and when it first came on, you know, heard a lot of people making comments of, oh, we need to be cleaned like, you know, like a lake top. That's not the lake. Two separate animals. And, you know, and learned a lot of that since been on the board, and educated through the conversations with Blue Ribbon Committee, everything that we're doing, looking how we're gonna do these things. Some of these channels are man-made, too, because they had some real grandiose ideas of flying people in, and being in other areas, and you wanted waterfront property, and you made waterfront property. And now there's issues, because it blows the wind from the north side of Lake Down. We've had these conversations last time. I think everything we're attempting to do is real important. And I know we got, how many units in here? Sixteen is what?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. And that's probably LG Sonic, probably putting something together and calculating what they think would have the most impact. Support the project, but I think we should really look at the grant funding opportunities. Willing to have another conversation in June, come back, hey, we weren't successful. We got, you know, $700,000. I think that would give us an opportunity, as a county, to have that discussion with our funds to go in there, our skin in the game, as they would say, so you can take that back to Blue Ribbon Committee, too. And I believe, you know, that's the best path forward. And I know I said something controversial at the summit, and we're having two conversations. Get me confused. I'm not in support of removing Lake Pillsbury. But the dam on the oldest natural lake in North America, that creates a problem here, in Clear Lake. Clear Lake cannot clean itself out like it did for millions of years, before people came in and put a dam on it. I will say that, I'm not a scientist, but it kept life here for thousands and thousands of years, because it was able to do what it naturally did every year, and most likely cleaned itself out when it could, kept the water in there as needed, as the Grigsby Riffle does for it naturally. And that's a conversation people need to be having. If you take something natural, and I would just equate that to the inhabitants of this country, and you take them, and you stick them somewhere, and you pin them on something, and you change that way that it's functioning, you have problems. And that's the way I look at the lake. So, yeah, I got some feedback, but I'm gonna say what I gotta say. So support this going forward with the grant option, and then would be willing to have that conversation at budget time, if we need to put some money in there, if we don't get the full funding opportunity. So what's my thoughts?
Supervisor Green?
Yeah. Appreciate the feedback, and I do share some of the concerns about the budgeting. But in this particular instance, just because I have been through Blue Ribbon a little bit, and seen that process at work, and just because I've seen the slow roll of grants and matching and stuff like that, it's really easy for these things to get lost in the weeds, so to speak. And it's not just 30 years we've been at this. It's 50 years, you know, 50 years. Water Resources used to have a algae research unit. That was actually the name of it. And this is the first real actionable proposal that I think is directly on point to what your constituents have been talking about to you for years. And it doesn't just affect your constituents. It affects lake health generally, and the economic vitality of this county. If I had a crystal ball, and I could predict some instant success in finding some matching funds, or, you know, getting CDBG to wake up, and, oh, we're doing buoys today. I don't see that happening. And I think if we sit in the driver's seat, we're gonna be that much more successful in recruiting partners down the road, if we have an actual viable project. And if we get a year or two of data, and we see some success, that will help engender that support. I know we have a letter that will be read into the record here a little bit, from the city manager. Clear Lake indicating strong support for this. So although normally, I would hedge my bets and urge caution, I'm signaling support for moving ahead today, and identifying whatever one-time funding source or reserve is needed to get this project moving. And we'll catch up on the matching, and all the good vibes later down the road. But we have been waiting 50 years to get an algae control project in this lake, and this provides an opportunity to do that. So I want to support that.
Well, I agree with Vice Chair Simon, that this is not something that I'll agree to fully fund. I just won't. We have a lot of problems. We have a lot of issues. We have a lot of projects. We're doing a lot of proactive work. You saw that presentation today. You saw another one last week, of how hard we're hustling for grants. And yes, cost share is part of it. And I'm supportive of helping us be able to champion this, but I want the other partners to be involved, because everybody needs to understand how this impacts our lake, and be cooperative and helpful with each other. We can't just take on this project, when we know we have two cities and tribal nations that share our shores, and share this water. And, you know, we have a lot of success with the Risk Reduction Authority, and bringing people together. And if you want, we can have those conversations there, because water quality is a risk, and we've got water purveyors there. But this has, in my mind, this has to be a collaborative project. It just can't be one entity and one agency. Supervisor Crandall?
Well, I don't want to speak for the tribes, but I could already tell there's three that will not partner with us on this. One already has their system moving. And I know for sure, my tribe isn't going to. They don't really want to be a part of a lot of these projects, unless it has to do with the hitch, or anything like that. I don't speak for them. They may change, they may say otherwise. But what I've noticed is anytime the county asks for, you know, a partnership when it comes to funding, it's a very difficult ask. And the reason I say that is because the TID was a very hard thing for a negotiating deal. But it finally got done. And, you know, that's still there. And so I think if it's proven, they might jump on board, or they might buy their own, or that way, we can lessen, as a county, to have as many. But that's just, that's just the path that I see, if we take that approach. I think if we ask them to come to the table and be a part of it initially, it might be an issue. Not to mention some of the things that have come to the board, that have put some of the tribes, you know, at a, at a level where they don't necessarily would want to work with us on something like this, maybe other things. This, I think, when we say it might not work, the reason why it might not, or the thought is, not thought, but the reason why is because it hasn't been done on a lake like this before. It's been done on smaller lakes, which have data that prove that it's worked. I think that's the issue, is we're coming into this not knowing with a lake our size, for, it's like going into the unknown. The other thing about it is, we talked about staff, and this has a monitoring system. It looks for chlorophyll, blue-green algae, pH levels, water temperature, turbidity, and dissolved oxygen. Not all of those are something that maybe they're looking for every day, but I know some of it is, is a lot of work they do anyhow. So it might help with that. I didn't necessarily get that information from Water Resources, but I know that they do these type of studies. So that's, that's just some input that I have, especially with tribes. Like, we're working on the Middle Creek Restoration Project. I'm part of Robinson, and I'm still having trouble getting them, you know, getting a working relationship with them, if that makes sense. You know, so when you mentioned some of the tribes, there might be a couple of them that will. You know, that's fine, but I don't know. I know the cities, are they, I know that I've seen the support from Allen online here.
I haven't gotten to see it.
I seen it. There's a, for this item.
Support, yeah. To let it support. But I think we need to understand what the whole program looks like. And part of that would be inviting everybody to the table, and starting the conversation. If people walk away, and they don't want to be a part of it, then the opportunity's been given. But I feel like that has to be part of the effort here.
So, actually, before I start speaking, we have Mr. Carter standing there. Looks like he has something to say, wondering if you maybe want to skip me in.
It'll just take a second. It actually relates to what Supervisor Patsy just said. It's from Scott DeLeon. It's been pointed out that the O and M costs have not been considered, which is correct. And we'll need to do that moving forward, because that can be a significant expense. It doesn't necessarily need to be all borne by the county. Last part was from me, not Scott.
And I do agree that there's still some answers that are needed, and I appreciate some of the comments that have been made today. I know that, so I put this on my slide, and I forgot to read it when I went through it. We've been paying Clean Lakes a contract since 2011. We just signed a new contract, and the memo said it was for four years, but the contract is for one year. I think the five years was meant that we don't have to do another RFP for five years, because they had just done one, and it was the only proposal we received. We are paying out of, Mr. Carter can correct me, we're paying out of geothermal, and out of TOT, and some other general fund...
That's for weed abatement, or algae?
And that's for aquatic, aquatic weed abatement.
Right.
The, I'm gonna, 90%, there's only one thin strip in the lower arm area that's aquatic weed treatment is done. 90% is all in the Lakeport vicinity, and some in the Lucrent area in Sota Bay. We do not ask people for money on this. We have been pulling it out, and...
That's not general fund money, though. That's geothermal royalties.
Which we can use on a multitude of things.
About 40% is geothermal royalties, which the type that we're using there can be used for almost anything. The TOT, 40% is general fund, and that's about 50%.
And so that TOT comes from both the cities?
No.
No.
Oh, oh, the R2.
Our TOT allocation. And then the Ag Department, for their gas tax, it varies from $7,000 a year, up to like $70 sometimes. So that would be pure general fund as well.
Okay.
So general fund, for sure, 50 to 67%.
And while I don't disagree with a collaborative, I know I've spoken to Golden State Water. I've spoken to Canockdy Water. I still need to sit down with Jeff over at Highlands Water. Golden State has given me a verbal that they want to purchase one.
Okay.
Place it right over their intake. I know that Frank over at Canockdy Water is speaking with his board, because he can't give me a verbal until his board actually says, yes, we're interested in funding this. And I know that Clear Lake Oaks Water, as well, has been...
I sent them the information. They had a board meeting last Thursday, so they should have it. They've probably reviewed it, and then I'll go to the next one to work with them on that to partner.
And so I don't disagree with that. But I do want to say that the county is the responsible agent for the lake. And if we're asking... agent for the lake. And if we're asking property owners to be responsible for their properties, then we should lead by that same example as well, by not just looking for money where maybe, because, yes, tribes can access the lake, not all tribes are right next to the lake. But if they're, if we're asking for everyone to pitch in, if they say no, that doesn't mean that the project shouldn't happen. It's still our responsibility to create a healthy lake, a healthy environment for both the people and wildlife and for our economy. I think the buck stops with us.
Well, I think there's a lot of ways to contribute other than the initial cost, and we don't know what operation, operating and maintenance looks like. There's going to be responsibility, if all of these buoys are right off the city's shores, what about vandalism and other issues like that? So, you know, that's why I'm, that's why I really need this to be collaborative, because you may, there may be partners that can't contribute. We know some water purveyors, they have a shoestring budget, some are for profit, some are not. But bringing them all together and coming up with a plan is how this is going to be most successful. And then we'll understand what the true costs are going forward, how can we leverage the funding that we do have with grant opportunities that are out there.
And then one last statement. Supervisor Green, I appreciate your comments. And you're right, it has been since, I think 1967 was the first formation for looking at the algae, if I remember the information that Scott DeLeon gave to me. But it will require, if we move forward with the proposal here, it will require four votes in order for reserves to be moved from LATCF to being an asset, a capital asset type of thing. And so I think that I need to answer some of your questions. I think that, I'll let Mr. Carter continue.
I'm just here for those questions that are going to happen, related to budget.
Please correct me if I'm wrong.
You're correct.
Vice Chair Simon?
So, okay, four-fifths vote if we're going to move that. You know, what I'm hearing a little bit, obviously, and we sit here on the diocese, you know, we get these items going through that process. Completely agree with, and what I feel, the board is in support of doing this project somehow. Talked about the CDBG budget. One question I would like to ask you and Supervisor Crandall is, I really would like to see if we can write that grant, this opportunity as we move through that. But, Mike, you make a good point, you know, there's a million things that we have going on with the restoration projects, everything that we have doing, studying the data for the water and everything that the tribes and everybody's collaborating on with the Blue Ribbon Committee, so I am a project guy. Tired of studying stuff, let's try something, man. So would there be a willingness by you guys to bring the scope down? Maybe instead of 28, you go down to 20, 10 at each spot? And then that spurs the conversation of agencies, hey, we're going to do this for a year if it works, we need to come together, all the agencies that are doing it, the tribes, everybody and say, hey, it did work, or it didn't work, we took a shot at it. If there's an opportunity for CDBG, if we take that shot and, you know, we can get some funding to reimbursement. So would there be a conversation on the scope? Because I imagine LG put the scope together.
Yes.
If you went for 10 and 10 in those areas, I think you could get a real good idea of where we're moving with that project. Because what it sounds like today is, there's a majority of the board that's in favor of moving this thing forward, one way or another, and that's the reality of it.
What about just one arm, and not two?
I think both of the arms are the worst, and so that's why.
Right, but you could demonstrate if it works in one arm, the Oaks arm, you did that as the pilot.
At this moment, I can agree to limiting the scope with reducing the number. I think we have to be careful so that we don't limit it so much that it really doesn't have an impact.
That's why I counted, you know, you had 28, you had 14 and 14.
Just four down.
Four away, I think you're spreading that out a little bit. I don't know, LG may come back and have a fit about that. But I think it's an opportunity to look at that, because if you're looking at 1.5 million, we already heard from Water Resource or Scott DeLeon that, you know, we don't know the operation costs. I think we're limiting the liability, I think, a little bit more to look through that project. I know a lot of folks, there's been failed measures, there's been other things that have been out there, collecting of the algae, I heard of that, which it didn't work out. You know, I obviously am very pro-lake. I think we have the most beautiful lake. I think, you know me, Bruno, through LTA and APC, I'd like to see a ferry program.
We still support that.
That we can turn that into a tourism opportunity, get people on this beautiful lake, because we do have problem areas in some places, but the overall, you get out in the middle of that thing, it's absolutely beautiful. So, that's another conversation. But looking at these opportunities, I think are really important. I think what it does open up the doors to, obviously, is the other government tribal nations in the county where there's opportunities to collaborate. You know, if this is a project that works, maybe there is some funding that can come through each one of our EPA departments that could help subsidize some of these for the lakes. The worst thing that could ever happen, and it did happen here recently, was the Tulip Boat Festival that's been going on forever, the existence of this lake having to be canceled because of sinobacteria. And that is a traditional cultural thing that is done and has been done here before this country was even created, and it had to be stopped. And that's, that's a horrible loss, just as much as the hitch would be or the chai, the loss to the cultures here that have been here forever. So, hearing the conversation today, if we could limit this, I'd be willing to move forward to look at the lactive funding, but also want to have a dual bridge where we're looking at the CDBG funding, if there's an opportunity to reimburse that, or even get the grant as we're moving forward. So those are the thoughts that I end up.
I'm going to give Supervisor Green.
Just real quick, if we, we don't have a technical subcommittee, but rather than slice and dice, you know, a number of buoys, obviously, the more buoys we slice off, the lower the cost, but also the higher the probability it won't work, because we didn't scale it appropriately. It's a big problem on both of those arms. So I think the original project, as it was approved by Blue Ribbon Committee, was not 10 and 10, I guarantee you that. And if we're going back to some baseline, let's do it in an informed way, let's get LG Sonic on the phone, let's get what technical assets we have to actually discuss that. But on the collaboration point, Blue Ribbon Committee is collaboration. The whole thing was invented as an exercise in collaboration. So the fact that we didn't get 100% buy-in doesn't mean that it didn't get approval, it was approved for funding by BRC, we just don't have the check right now. So I don't want to, like, spend a whole lot of time using a budget to reinvent this project as it was originally scoped and approved through a very collaborative process. But if there are concerns about the scale, you know, what, what do we have in terms of a technical subcommittee or an ad hoc that could be formed to address any technical questions or O and M questions that may be raised on this? And then whatever budget transfers have to happen, you know, what meetings have to happen with that? So it sounds like, you know, I'd like to move something forward that we're not, like, slicing it in half off the top without really justifying that, other than our concern over funding. And if we are to bring it back, what, would it be mid-year in January? You know, is there time enough to shape a proposal? So I'd like to give them clear direction that I would at least support seeing some modified proposal to come back at mid-year. But I'm not, I'm not as concerned with this project as I might be with other projects about, like, bootstrapping some new collaboration that may or may not happen. Collaboration is, we've been trying that for 50 years again, plus, we have an actionable project, let's find the money to do it, and let's get to work on all the other good projects that BRC also voted to approve.
So I, what I'm hearing is that we've had algae problem for a long time in 50 years, and this is something that we're going to continue to work on. And again, I am supportive of this project. I, this is not a silver bullet, and we don't know if it's going to work, and it's going to cost us $1.5 million. And I'm just, I cannot be okay with that when we have all these other projects going on. And if we can just take the next year and look at other opportunities to leverage the little funding that we do have, and slow this down a little bit, and build a collaboration, and develop our, our plan on how, what this is actually going to look like, that is the more responsible direction to go. And I understand that, you know, you're feeling pressure and we want to solve this right away, but I'll go back to tree mortality, two years, two years I've been working on this. And we have not spent any money yet. We're getting close and we're waiting, and that is not just a fire risk, that's public safety, that is, you know, trees falling on roads. That is our responsibility too. And sometimes you just have to slow down a little bit and make sure that you're doing the responsible things with our taxpayer money. We had a conversation yesterday about the money we have out for the Flashes Project. We don't know what's happening with that. Last week, we just dedicated $200,000 to Middle Creek, again, outside of budget discussion. I, I think we just, we need to come together. I'd be a little bit more conservative with our reserves and our funding going into a possible financial downturn, especially with the state and federal budgets.
And then they look at me. So, at mid-year, which comes before your board, February 6th, we won't know exactly what we're going to apply for in that grant yet, and we definitely won't know what we would receive. So, almost for sure, anything that is spent before that letter of, we get that grant or not, is going to be borne by the county. I don't want to say much more than that, but that's the way it would, would probably be pan out. Because very few grants, actually, if you spend the money and then you get the grant, very few go before that start date.
So today, all we're looking at is direction, this is not an approval of spending, this is not a contract. I obviously need to get more answers on maintenance cost, maintenance operations. I do have the warranties of the parts, so that if something does go wrong on those certain things, that those things automatically get replaced. I think that there's an opportunity to decrease the scope with the number and go after grant funding to complete that scope and possibly reimburse for year two and three. So I think there's ways to splice it and be able to get to the same destination. And so I, I think today, if Supervisor Crandall agrees, I would like to approve giving direction to staff to continue to get the answers we're asking about that we don't have answers for, and to come back with a final proposal of what this decreased scope and what the payments would look like. And again, at that point, we would have the ability to have the conversation about the, the funding and the grant. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. The other thing, I don't know if we talked about it, was the, if we felt we didn't want to be a part of it any longer, we don't have to pay the full, the full deal, we can come out of it with, like, an exit clause, if you will, and...
Yeah. And I didn't mention that, because it's not my favorite part of the negotiations that occurred, that if we don't like it, we don't have to pay year three, which is a savings of like $340,000. But then again, what's the purpose of having a bunch of sonic buoys that aren't doing what we want them to do? We would be able to keep the eight buoys that collect data, which is important, in my opinion, for our lake health and understanding what's happening. Yeah, I haven't discussed that, just because it's, the potential for it not working, if it doesn't work, there is just no good news to provide, other than we can continue collecting data. And I will say that after this year, I can even dedicate, if we keep going with cannabis taxes, that my $100,000 goes right back into the general fund in order to pay this back. It's that important that we find a solution sooner than later. But we continue to look for grant funding to complete the scope, and I think that we come back again one more time for final approval or for final review, and see where we go, and keep getting, keep testing the wind and seeing where the board sits on what it looks like.
I just, just want to reiterate too, I think the last time we had the conversation, and EJ just struck my memory about getting one for, I can't, what water company is potentially looking at something?
So I know that.
Or was that you said?
Golden State, Canuckti.
And then I have Clear Lake Oaks Glen Haven Business.
And I think that's a very important opportunity too, when we're talking about the clap, the clap, the cap, the cap, that, the climate, sorry, man, that was a slip there. The cap that we're putting together, when we're talking drought and that opportunity, having these things around the water systems are really important. So, you know, collecting the data, we're going to be able to push that to other agencies and say, look, you know, if it works out the way that they're selling it, yeah, this would be a great opportunity, because we know how affected each and every one of our water districts were, trying to extend the lines, doing all those drought opportunities, but we have a couple around each one of the intakes that could give us a real opportunity down the road. So I think the data collection is really important, most important things, having people to be able to drink the water. And we know, and I think we had that conversation too, we have all the ones that are non-licensed, the private drinking water folks. And I think during the drought, we got an idea on that, but I think that's something, you know, we need to look at from our special districts department of who's drawing water from that lake for an environmental health issue to go down the road. So, important stuff, obviously, and support.
They didn't necessarily commit, but they, they are interested. And I'm not sure how many they would be interested in, but I did send them all the information, and I sent them the last presentation, the video, and so we'll find out more. But I know that they're, they're highly interested because of the last fire situation they had in town in 2020. The water was so low that they had a boil, a water boiling situation going. And so with something like this to help, if it was to help with the water, it would give them, you know, a better opportunity, not only to serve people with drinking water, but also in the fire situation as well. So that's why they were interested, you know, but doesn't mean that they're, you know, on board completely, right? So, the board has to make their decision.
They got to show me first.
Yeah.
So I did want to bring up one more thing. It would be about mid-Fairway to the end of February, when we would come back to your board about that CDBG MIT Rep grant. And that's where some decision can be made on what we're applying for, whether it be the year two and three and we take care of year one ourselves, or try for the whole project, which then wouldn't start befunding until July-ish.
C. A. L. Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like some clarification when you say staff, and who, who is that?
I would say Water Resources, and probably the assistance of Mr. Carter as well, or maybe Ms. Logstons, since she's also working on that grant, because I want to make sure that they understand what the project scope is, so that if we are going to implement that in the grant proposal, that they understand what it is that we're asking.
Thank you, sir.
Is that good enough, or did I miss something?
No, that's good enough. I just wanted to make sure I knew who's, who's, who's doing what.
Okay. I don't think we took public comment. We have a hand up. Betsy Cohn?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Board, for this incredibly important discussion. I want to say that the Blue Ribbon Committee, I believe, if I recall, there was an argument against placing any of these units in the Clear Lake Oaks arm, because we already have two major projects, including the oxygenation at the surface of the lake bed through the UC Davis grant that came from the state. And, and there was some discussion about whether that would be, you know, the two data issues would be confused if you add those buoys in the, in the Clear Lake Oaks arm. The lower arm of the lake, you can see on those satellite images, which are on your local Water Resources webpage, that the lower arm of the lake has the greatest concentration of difficulties, because first of all, it doesn't circulate much in the summer, you're not releasing water from the channel, and there's not a lot of activity. So the, the presence of these pollutants is extremely visible, even though we know that the majority of the actual nutrients come in through the upper arm, and then they're circulated down that way. So, however, one of the things that has not been done, and I really encourage you to do this project, figure it out. do this project, figure it out, it's, it's more than 50 years. The first investigation of Clear Lake, a Lake County investigation done by the State Department of Water Resources dated 1963, is in the public library, or it has been. This is, this is an ongoing thing. Not to be familiar with the Clean Water Program, the Stormwater Management, Shoreline Protection, all these things that we have been working on for three or four decades, doesn't negate the fact that this may actually fix something, like Moak says. The solar bees that you were talking about, aeration devices, no, they're not efficient enough. The Blue, the Big Valley Tribe, however, goes out there in their marina and, and air raids in the marina to make the, the launch areas clean for launching. We know that works in very small sections. We need to know whether we can do this in a larger area, and the lower arm is the perfect place to try it. The other thing you could do is the city of Clear Lake has a longstanding drainage problem. Forty-nine miles of the city's, 112 miles of roads are unpaved. The drainage system itself, there was a report done in 1983 or '04, and then updated in the early '90s. Lafco's Municipal Service Review describes specifically what the failure to, to correct those drainages has added to the lower arm pollution. So there are many, many things to take into consideration, but by golly...
Thank you, Betsy, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else with public comment? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'll bring it back to the board.
You know, I thought of something. She, she mentioned a really interesting thing, and I, I, in thinking about it, when the hypo-limnetic oxygenation project takes place, and hypothetically, if this takes place, we can't determine, she's essentially right, we wouldn't be able to determine which one really worked, they just both would work, right? And so you mentioned, can we just do one arm? Considering the hypo-limnetic oxygenation project is going to happen, I think it's funded, and it's going to move forward eventually, when would potentially this, if, you know, of course hypo, you know, hypothetically, when would this take place if it was approved?
I was told that it would take four to six weeks to construct the units that we're looking to order and, and attach, and everything would be done within six to, six weeks.
So we're still basically looking at coming back in February to find funding, all of that stuff and whatnot. And so I'm willing to start with your arm. That way, it suffices what you mentioned about the, you know, doing one side and seeing if it really works, and also allowing the hypo-limnetic oxygenation the opportunity to see if that really works or not.
When does that start?
I want to say this year, but it could be, it could be '25, but I remember a couple years back, they were like, oh, once it's approved, we'll look at '24. Usually the funding comes, and then it's a year out. If that makes sense.
Uh huh.
So if it was, was approved in '22, which there was projects approved in '22, but they got pushed back because of the funding, so, from what I understand, it should be this year is when they start with that. So, when you mentioned, let's start with one, and then Betsy made, made an important highlight that we would rather see what works and what doesn't. So I'd be willing to, to start with, with one side.
And again, Stephen, the CDBG application, we'll talk about that in February, submitted in March, and when would the funding come back from that?
Best estimate is we'll get the letter July sometime, and funding shortly after since the state.
Okay.
And at this point, that changes nothing for the direction, because even in the memo as stated, it wasn't any kind of full approval, it was direction to staff to come back with contract and funding opportunities, and I think that's the same direction that was provided.
And operation and maintenance?
Yeah, with answers to questions.
And more information on who collaborative partners would be?
Yep.
Okay.
Just one final comment, just want to say, appreciate the conversation, appreciate Betsy, you know, the updates on everything, but yeah, supporting that one arm by Clear Lake sure simplifies things, gives us an opportunity to do two projects. Yeah, definitely, don't know how that changes the cost, but if we just break it down math, it's like half.
It's half.
Which is a lot more palatable, and I think addresses everybody's goals of being fiscally responsible but taking action to do those types of things. So, however we do, do it today, I'd still like to look at grant opportunity, but really, one arm would be, I could support that, so, anyway.
I just have one more thing, it's actually not fiscal-related. Supervisor Spatte, when is the right time to put these buoys in? You were talking to me previously about the right timing of it.
The timing is not when there's algae everywhere. The timing would be prior to March or April. I think typically we start seeing algae blooms pop up maybe at the earliest late May, sometimes later and around July. So the anticipation was always to try to get it into a early spring, late winter installation. And so we'll see, if the timing doesn't work out, then I appreciate the support that the board is providing for the project. We'll figure out if we can get some answers and make it even more palatable, but I think at least I feel that there's progress today, and I'm going to take that with a little bit of gratitude and move forward with that. But timing-wise, we'll, we'll figure out and we'll make it work when it needs to work.
Okay.
Thank you.